Okay, so we can start the meeting. I'm not sure if Dragon's coming or not. But we can get started. We don't have anyone who's not part of the committee other than Handing Media. But anyone have a public comment?
One public comment.
Great approval of the minutes from May 11.
Thank you, Amy.
Motion to approve.
I had a couple of questions in here that I didn't hear back from folks on.
Yeah, about the RFP for the the senior center.
Yep, that I switched that I that I.
Well, is that true? Is there one going out for?
I don't know, Amy. Do you know print an RFP going out to this for the senior center before ours goes out?
I'm not sure.
Is it for what particular project?
I'm not sure. So when I met with Jennifer, she said that there were several projects ahead of ours. And so she said that Goodwin, the Collins, and then she mentioned something about the senior center, but she didn't specify what it was. So I wasn't sure if that required an RFP or not.
I bet it's that sidewalk in the front there, the walkway that's all cracked.
Or the silver panels.
Oh, maybe that's what it was.
Are they not working?
I think they're up.
And they won't be working. They're right.
They they, well, I don't I don't think they even, you know, I don't think they put the RFP together yet. I don't know. I'm not sure where that's at.
I don't think, you know, boy, it doesn't seem fair that we were promised everything would be ready by fall. If we're number three or number four, it'll be fall for a couple of years from now.
For the purpose for the purpose of the minutes, I think we can just keep out the senior center. I guess we didn't even discuss that in the last meeting.
What was the other question?
So there's there's one sentence here that says the RSC is very disappointed in the two optimistic predictions given by the town administrator to help preserve the Russell School building from further deterioration deterioration. I just thought it was a little too opinionated, even though I agree with what was said. Yeah, I'm just making a suggestion that we say that the RSC is disappointed that we may need to wait until spring 2024 to apply for CPA funds.
Okay.
We say, no, never mind.
Does that sound okay to you?
Sure.
Yeah, that's 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 PC.
And then there was one mention of the adding dehumidifiers to prevent mold from developing. We were gonna ask the building maintenance, but did we talk about that?
Yes, we did. Dan mentioned.
So, okay, so we'll be.
Did they have dehumidifiers last year?
Yeah.
They don't do anything for that building.
So that was it for the minutes. So just without one change.
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, can I get a second?
Well, I can't second.
Can I second it at the pair?
Why not?
Okay, second. All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, moving on. Carolyn's bullet points from the town meeting speech. Dan, did you get a chance to pull those together?
Did.
Awesome.
So the bullet points from her.
From Carol.
Carolyn, basically, what looks to be the scope of work.
Amy, I'll send this to you right now.
To ensure robust public engagement. Wow, is that what she said?
Well, that's what that's what was written on her presentation.
Sure.
So Amy, I just emailed that to you from my phone. But I'll read it. Select board to engage a firm to undertake a reuse feasibility study for Russell School Building. Scope of work: Coordination with town administration and select board and community, neighbors and advocacy groups to ensure robust public engagement, pre-development stabilization, construction and operating budget estimates, funding source identification, including but not limited to state and federal grant and historic tax credits, assist in project advocacy with state, local, and federal officials and partners, help frame the decision-making process for the town and define the case for the following four outcomes. Public project: The building will be funded by public sources with a public end use. Public slash private partnership: The building will be funded by both public and private sources with both public and private users. Eligibility for historic and other tax credits will be reviewed. Private project: The building will be offered for sale or long-term use to the private market with potential deed restrictions. Demolition: A review of the process, procedures, and costs for such actions will be included in the report. Also looking at other studies previously for Russell School.
She's talking about feasibility studies, I guess.
I guess the other, you know, the other between Old Mohawk and the the R A report and whatever one was way before both of those were the original one when they needed the grammar school. Apparently, they did a study. I wasn't around for a few years back then. So apparently, there was a a study to try to make that building into some type of the pool use. And
But there never was another committee like Alan, yes.
Not really. I mean, there was the municipal building committee.
And you focused on this.
We focused on all the buildings and Russell School was one that's like, well, we don't have the time or money to look at that building right now. So if that's going on the background, we figure out some, you know, how to get some safe and usable buildings. But there was no specific committee, I think, until the actual Russell School committee formed. And I forget if that was 2019 or I think it was 19 and it it sort of spun out of control really quick because of COVID.
What what committee was that?
The Russell School Committee. There was an original.
There was one?
Yeah, it was like 2019 or 2020. And Alan was there and there was a bunch of other spaces that I recognize, but don't I don't remember because I don't hang out with the people. And a bunch of people showed up to the to the meetings and, you know, there was a lot of conversation, but then.
Probably 2020 then if COVID if COVID interrupted.
I think so.
That's March 2020. Everything.
Yeah, either 19 or 20, and it went for like a few months, you know, two or three months at the very most before it you know, just disbanded organically.
So it was an official committee like our.
It was. And I'm sure we could we can find the members, but.
Because I think we should have more members taken.
Good idea, but you know, you can't you can't make people pay more than they're allowed to.
No, but we can certainly ask the select board to promote that.
That's true.
And I don't think they, you know, shake a stick at that because they're, you know, this town is run by mostly volunteers. So the more volunteers we get, the more eyes and ears on a project, the better.
Yeah, exactly. I wish we had some names from that survey.
We do have some names. I mean, I can ask. I can send a totally separate email to folks to see if they're interested.
Some positive ones.
Yeah.
Now, I guess we'd have to just do it across the board.
Yes. Um, yeah, we could do that. So, okay, so looking at the scope of work. Any comments, thoughts?
Well, this is a lot of work for the select board. It says select board to engage.
Engage a firm, which is, you know, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work for the firm, but it's it's you know, if the select board is going to engage that firm, one would kind of guess that their appointed committee to deal with the building in particular will be the people to sort of get firsthand, look at how the firm is operating. And I got to tell the select board how to how to operate, but you figure if they have a subcommittee such as ours, it's been quoted to deal with it, that we'd be the first line of defense or offense or whatever to deal with it, so.
Yeah, so after the meeting that we had last time, I checked in with Carolyn because we wanted to be part of the process. And her response was not positive. I essentially asked how we can help in the feasibility process and how we can finalize or a Q or at least review of course posted. And she said, we already have the scope of work. If you remember, that is what was approved by the select board to be presented in town meeting. Jake, Gary, and Carolyn will work on the project. The RFP is prepared under the requirements from the Office of the Inspector General, and they're very specific.
Jake, who?
Jake is from Architectural Heritage Foundation.
Okay, all right.
Carolyn and Gary Burke.
Oh, Gary.
So it doesn't make any sense that is Jake already been hired?
Well, that's that's what I was confused about because the scope of work is what the Architectural Heritage Foundation provided was about. But I mean, I think that would be great, but we also need to ask other people like Old Mohawk.
Well, I mean, you know, providing the scope of work is one thing. But actually, hiring the company comes after the bid proposals come back.
Right, that's right.
So, you know.
Architectural Foundation should not.
I mean, if that if if they're put in the game already. Right, well, if they if they've provided, they said they were to provide a certain amount of hours for free and if they're forwarding preliminary scope of work is, you know, included in that 40 hours.
I thought it was six.
I forget. I don't remember. How many hours? I don't remember. They were they were, you know.
Didn't seem like very many, and I and I assume that just taking a survey, I mean, taking a look at the building was took up all the hours.
Sure, I mean, that's that's out of their way. I don't know where, what what part of the state are they from?
Boston.
Yeah, so that's a couple of hours each way.
Yeah.
And, you know, certainly a couple.
Six hours here. Don't you think they were here longer than a couple of hours?
Probably did. They probably worked for a couple of hours, right? And, you know, meeting people and.
Well, you were there, Courtney, weren't you? How how long were they around?
Um, I think we were in the building for maybe 45 minutes and they chatted before and after.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And they made that all the roof will be fine.
Yeah.
In 45 minutes, they just decided.
And that was a super dry day and then.
Yeah.
So maybe they do have extra hours. So why why did Carolyn say we should not be involved in the process? You don't know.
I mean, I have thoughts. I'm not going to share them.
Yeah, I I I would highly recommend they, you know, start to, you know, as soon as they get get any kind of movement on this, that they use our committee and our enthusiasm to make sure that the because I'm I'm not biased. I mean, I'm sure I want to save the building, but again, I wouldn't, you know, hold this town to that's something they didn't want to do. So it's important to get everybody involved and you know, hear everybody's stories and opinions.
Should we go be going to this select board again about this?
Well, if anybody has, I mean, have I think the NBC is going to go in front of select board tomorrow, so I'll be there tomorrow. If anybody has questions for the public comment, I can I don't mind you know, saying something before their meeting because it's not going to be something that's on their agenda. But I can I can feed them questions or comments from this committee during that section of their meeting.
And what are they going to be talking about with NBC?
They're going to go over the the current projects that need to go out for bid, which is the Town Hall Columns and the the Goodwin, the the old Goodwin building project.
Yeah. Elevator. And the bathroom.
Originally, it was supposed to be split up into two phases, try to save as much CPA money as possible. And they the more they the more they put it off, the higher the costs get.
Of course.
So now they're trying to fit it all into one big thing. It's probably going to suck up all CPA. So it's either it's either do or die for that project for the next meeting. You know, the, you know, my opinion about that particular thing is that the Goodwin has a good room.
Yes, I noticed that on the way in.
Yeah, so we don't, the, you know, needing to use that building right away is is important either. You know, it's just as important as using the Russell School right away. There's no immediate need for that building. You know, right now, it's occupied by Hadley Media. And it's it's, you know, being used for that and you know, it fits into the what they need and they're getting good use out of it.
So I want to make sure that we're sticking to the agenda.
Yep, thank you.
Wait, can we ask Amy if we should be going to the select board, her opinion? Amy?
Well, yeah, you you could. I wouldn't suggest. I mean, I guess you could tomorrow night, but tomorrow night's going to be a very, very, very hot night. Um, with the Young Men's Club Public Forum.
Oh, it's a public forum.
Yeah. That's why I was on two hour long meetings today.
Boy.
Yeah.
You know, if I were to say anything during that meeting, it would just be comments within the two or three minute period that's allowed, and it would just be something for a later meeting. But I.
Yeah, that's fine.
So Amy.
Yeah, if you want to do that somehow, that's fine.
Okay. Is there a new town administrator?
Is there a new one?
Not administrator, whatever you call it. Administrator to the administrator.
Jennifer's new, but yeah.
Replacement.
Oh, the HR director.
I know what it was called.
Yeah, yeah, Jenna. Oh, no, 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 sorry. Jennifer is licensing. She's still there. And then our HR person quit or left. So there's a new one hopefully coming on soon. Um, so, but I think I, yeah, I believe so. Um, what I would suggest would be if you wanted to say something in the public comment section, then I could take it as a note and have them add it as an agenda item for the for future.
Yeah.
Right.
If that works.
Yeah, I mean, anything said in public comment section really doesn't, you know, there's no reason for for you don't need to act on that at all. It's just a a public comment. And if there are possibility, you know, if I were to stick a question or a comment in from this committee, it would just purely be for, you know, an agenda item or not, you know, for a for a later.
Future, future.
For future discussion.
Well, and to encourage, encourage them to get the RFP out ASAP. Um, the time, time is is not on our side.
So, yeah, so in terms of that, I checked in with Carolyn about that as well.
Yeah.
Because it's essentially, you know, six weeks start to finish if everything goes well, which brings us to August 15th, which is the CPA deadline. Um, and I said, you know, we would like to get it on the war in the fall. Do you think this will be feasible? Given the CPA deadline, and if not, is there another way that you suggest us getting it on the warrant? She did not respond to the la the second question. But the first one, she basically said, you know, there's many products ahead of ours, but the plan is to complete it in July. And for us to be patient.
Plan to complete what?
The RFP.
The RST.
Well, at any rate, I certainly at the very least, I can offer our assistance if needed to help them assemble, you know, the RFP or you know, we're we're here for them to bounce questions off of. We certainly you know, they don't need our approval for anything, but they did appoint us to look at this and predict. So it's it's important to to include us in the conversation. So I can say something about that.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, looking at these things, public projects, by public-private partnership, then down to demolition. I mean, were they not looking at the survey at all? It's as if the survey is being redone again.
So the feasibility study is going to include all the options possible.
Yeah, and it says.
Everyone is well informed on all of the options to make a more informed decision.
Not include, so this is actually ignoring that survey.
Well, I guess.
Not necessarily. I think I think what my, because I I suggested having another survey, and I think where my mind was going with that was so now, before we had multiple options and multiple ideas, and now we're kind of down to four, and I kind of would like to see where the residents would want to land on that, given the information, because I think before it was, there wasn't really dollar values and amounts associated with it. And I think once we have that feasibility study and all of the information with that, um, I think there would be a lot of value in an additional survey saying, okay, we got your responses from before. We did a feasibility study. We're going to go to the CPA. Um, now here's what we found from this feasibility study. Okay, here, what do you think now that the parameters and everything are a lot more tightened up? Um, and you could decide that that you don't need to because it's going to go to town meeting, but I think um, having the survey that everyone can like share and get out there further would give you more leverage at Town Hall because I think people that come to town meeting are like polarized on one side or the other of an issue, and it would be nice to see a full, well-rounded, um, you know, general, you know, consensus.
So I hear you, and we received many more survey responses than maybe all surveys that have happened in Hadley. Um, it sounded like folks were really impressed by getting over, I think we got 560 responses. Um, so if you have any advice on how to get more people to respond, that would be great. I think we posted online, we put it in the water bill. We put it in the post office and Town Hall and the library, senior center. I just don't know. I don't know. I just feel like it was already robust, already robust response. So if the select board is asking for more, I don't know how that's going to happen.
No, yeah, the select board wasn't asking for it. It was just my personal, it was just like a personal thought.
I think what you were saying was
I mean,
once dollar amounts are attached to each of the uh, repairs needed, then the survey may come out differently. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, you you did get a lot of responses, and I think one of the things that, and you know, I'll I'm not really throwing anyone under the bus, but I think one thing that that Joy said was, well, that's only, you know, 200 and something actual residents of the town. And I said, well, you know, they did split it out. Um, but I think, yeah, because you guys did fantastic. I am not knocking the survey at all. I thought it was enlightening, and I thought it was wonderful. Absolutely. But what I'm saying is that, you know, when you have the dollar amounts attached to everything, um, and I think people, once the feasibility is study is done, are really going to have a lot more emotion to it because, okay, it's just been something that has been kicked down the road for years and years and years. And so people in their head are like, oh, we're not losing Russell School. It's still there. And it's like, okay, no. The feasibility study is done. This is it. Like, either we're saving this amazing building that our town has, or it's gone forever. And when we say like gone forever, I mean, an option would be to demolish it. Do we want to spend the money to demolish it? Or do we want to give it up for private use? And I think it would make it more real for people. Like like we're at the end of the road now.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's hard. I mean, when you you can assign dollar amounts to each of these. And, you know, a couple of these items in the scope of work. You know, funding sources ident- identification, including but not limited to state, federal grant, historic tax credits. Well, you never know what you're going to get, so it's hard to apply that to the feasibility study. Help frame the help frame the decision process for for the town and define case for the following four outcomes. Well, you know, according to the survey, the majority of the town has made its decision, and adding a dollar amount to it certainly puts things into perspective. But the the four bullet points, public projects, public-private projects, private project, demolition, are lined up in order according to how much they would cost. You know, public project being that's going to cost the most, and demolition, that's going to cost the least. But
Well, why not?
And I mean, that's the other thing is, you know, demolition can come, you know, comes with
A million bucks.
Well, it's for the far greater cost, you know, above and beyond money. And that's a
That's true.
It's a, you know, it's a blow to the to the town's spirit and, you know, you lose the town's confidence as
Right.
a town government to do things right. And you you lose a building to demolition, or you lose a building to divest to private interests. You've lost the confidence of your town to to govern properly. Especially when the survey said that the majority of the town would like to keep this building for its future use. So their costs above and beyond the fiduciary, you know, the the fiscal cost.
Well, I actually think that I kind of agree with Amy that I think when the dollar signs are put on there, people are going to say, oh, dear.
So we had a dollar signs. Yes, we have a dollar sign.
Well, we didn't have the dollar signs for for operation. You know, we don't know what the operation.
These four bullet points, we certainly did.
For the stabilization, you're talking.
No, we have the stabilization. We have the sale, well, sales, nothing. We had leasing and we had demo.
I think we, that was only an estimate for the demo, I think.
Yeah, but it'll still be an estimate coming from the feasibility study.
Sure.
I hope so, because especially if you want to do it in the green way, the things are saved and recycled, and that's a lot more expensive than just trashing and.
Oh, yeah, and a lot of the, I mean, the it's it's not built during the time period when asbestos was the best material. That was the Hooker School. So there's probably not as much asbestos, it's probably not as much asbestos in that building. But when you demolish it, it all becomes tribal. It all becomes one big meat bag. So in fact, a majority of that stuff gets shipped off to Minerva, and it costs a fortune. Then you have to double line each dumpster truck with plastic bags. And have you ever tried to double line a dumpster with plastic? It's not easy. So it's not cost money. And there's.
Well, I think things are separated on site is if you're going to do it the green way. Um, yes, it's very expensive. So when they said 900 buck, $1,000, I just. Um, yes, it's very expensive, so when they said nine hundred bucks, thousand dollars, I just thought, oh dear, that's not enough.
Well, and, you know, above beyond that, the, the, you know, we had stabilization costs for, for, uh, to stabilize the building, not to reuse it.
That's right.
To reuse it is a completely different cost.
Right, right.
From just stabilizing it, and, you know. The, the town really has to come to grips, you know, uh, with, uh, the, this, the longevity of the project. How long is this particular phase of the project gonna last, and then when are you gonna be able to use the building, and, you know.
Right.
Stabilization might, might cost one to two million, but you're still not gonna be able to use the building. And then you're gonna redo a certain other part of the building, maybe the windows. Um. Until later. That's, that's another, yeah, three quarters of a million or whatever, and you're still not gonna be able to use the building. And there's all these other costs that come along with using, you have to rebuild the porch and, and the approaches, all the steps need to be rebuilt. Um, that's another cost, and you're still not gonna be able to use the building, but, you know, if, if you. Think that you're gonna put ten or twelve million dollars into the building and it's still not gonna be usable, well, that's not real. If you put that kind of money into the building, you're gonna get to the point where. Very close to using.
I'll tell you, if it sits around though, the cost is gonna.
And, you know, honestly, I don't think these big numbers really scare our residents as much. As, as, as town hall thinks, this building was seven point one million, that building over there was six. Six plus million, that, that's the North Hadley Building Station was, was another six million.
So that was almost, that was eighteen.
Eighteen to twenty-one million in, in a very short span of time, and this town.
Our taxes did go up.
Their taxes did go up, our town didn't waver, the people voted for it, they knew what we needed. They knew it needed to be done, and this, I think, is another one of those projects, and I don't think that the, the town takes that light.
You think this is another one of these projects?
Oh, absolutely, and don't, don't be fooled that you're gonna get away with spending two million dollars.
I'm not sure that the select board, Amy, do you feel that the select board thinks that way?
Oh, it's hard to tell. I mean, I, I can say that I think it's probably fifty-fifty or. Two to three, um, you know, it, it's, yeah, I think it's a really split vote. Like, I'm, I'm a bleeding heart, so I'm like, I wish I could just buy it privately. Fix it up myself, get donations, fix it up, and then give it back to the town. Um, I know that, that Joyce, I, I, I think Joyce was, um, of the opinion of just getting rid of it. I, I don't even think she would care if it was demolished. Um, I don't know where Randy and Jane sit on it.
Well, I, I had the feeling Jane was with us all.
Well, nobody wants to make a hasty decision, and, nobody wants to really rush into things, and that's understood, but this has been a long time coming. And it is a big project, and it is a huge decision, it's not just for, for us and our tax dollars, it's for the future tax dollars and, and. What those people are gonna need, and, you know, we'll all be long gone.
Well, I will be for you.
Uh, they, it, you know, it, you know, like, my point is, we're, we're trying to be responsible to the community, not necessarily what we want. You know, we all got wants and hopes and dreams and everything, but let's be responsible about what a community and what the country actually needs here. And, uh, you know, it's important, I think, to show that we have some kind of integrity and respect for our past as well as our future.
Um, so.
I agree.
Wanted to clarify, uh, so the survey that we did, four hundred and thirty-two Hadley residents filled it out. It was only a hundred and thirty who were outside of Hadley, and we separated them out, just wanna make sure that's on there.
I'm putting it in the minutes.
Um, and I also checked in with Allison about our thoughts for doing another. Survey, um.
Uh-huh.
She said it's probably fine, you know, what would happen after the feasibility study is completed, people can review it, et cetera. Um, she said it will be tricky to have only Hadley residents fill it out, because, uh. Unless they put in their name and address and we send it to the clerk's office and they double check that first piece of that address. We cannot confirm a hundred percent that, that's the person who built it out. Uh, but we can use the honor system.
Yeah, are you a Hadley resident?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you could still have it as a question on there, just to potentially weed out someone who might not be.
What about people who own businesses in town?
Yeah.
Cause there's thirty-nine people out of the hundred and thirty who are not Hadley residents, who work in town, and I imagine some of them are business owners.
Yeah, how do you know that, was that part of the survey?
Yeah.
You work in.
I mean, you could have that also, like, do you work in town, yes or no, do you own a business in town, yes or no?
Pay taxes to.
Or maybe, yeah, do you pay taxes at Hadley?
I don't know, that might be a little too, uh, it might be a little too personal, even if it isn't anonymous survey. But I mean, it's true, like, how many people work outside of the town that don't even drive on that road? Right, there's plenty of people that live here that have probably only driven by that once or twice a year.
Or maybe their kids go to school here.
Mm-hmm, that's true, a lot, a lot of school choice.
Yeah. Well, Hadley does have a good reputation for good schools.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Anything else in terms of the survey, the past survey or the, uh, future survey?
Set in the agenda.
Uh, yes, yeah, I did ask Amy. Uh, five, I did ask Amy if, uh, we could potentially get some funding from town if we go do the survey again since the.
Donated ninety-nine, ninety-seven dollars for the survey.
How mu- yeah, so how much it costs?
Survey monkey thing for, what was it?
Yeah, I think it was ninety, ninety-nine dollars a month, and we did four months.
Really, he paid all that? You paid some too.
I'd be willing to donate too.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I should. So we had it.
Yeah, the town wants us to do it, the town should be able to assist us with that.
That's right, exactly, and they should phone me up. And we had it for, for a thousand residents, a thousand respondents.
Oh, up to a thousand respondents?
Yeah. I've been doing the old minutes, trying to do an annual report for everybody.
Yeah, well, we're gonna get.
About halfway through.
Do you wanna talk about it now, that's, um, the second thing on the agenda that we need to go over.
Second.
Well.
I thought the survey was number five.
No, so, under miscellaneous, there's a bunch of things, so there's one thing we have to discuss, and then the next is the town report, would you like to talk about that now?
Well, what I've been doing is, um. I wrote pretty, you know, back then, extensive minutes. And so I could, you know, reconstruct what, what happened to each of it, and we, and we worked very fast at the beginning. You know, the survey and the forum. Um, different speakers coming in.
Yeah.
So, onto there. Um, I, so it's probably gonna be about six pages long, do you think that's too long?
Amy, do you think that's too long for a select board report?
Six me- uh, six minutes?
Six pages.
No, oh, six pages? I don't think so.
And it's, it's a bit, I mean, you try to consider the. It's an annual report, or just a report?
Just the report to the select board to let me, what you've been doing.
How wonderful it's been.
I, I think about, when I think about reports to the select board, I think about, um, a report that will go on, uh. You know, annual report that you. And so.
Right.
I mean, so, some departments, I'm sure, have several pages, but we're a committee, and for municipal building.
Well, I could. Sure.
Yeah, sort of try to boil.
Yeah, we did this, we did this, we did this.
Right, I mean, it's nice to have some results and things, but.
But I also wanted to see that. You know, show the select board that we. We weren't just talking about pie in the sky, we hadn't really studied the matter, I remember that one night. You brought in someone about, um, housing. I gave that person a hard time. Because I didn't, I thought that that's what you wanted.
No. No.
And, um. So I read the minutes from that. And, uh, was slightly embarrassed about my behavior, but sorry.
Um, okay, so if you can keep going on that, and then.
I can, I can submit a one-page with the annual report, we all have to, everybody has to do that, so I'll do one.
No, not everybody, we were not invited to participate this year, so I asked Jane about it after the fact.
Yeah.
That we weren't included in the town report, and she said, well, not everybody's included, um, you know, the. The mosquito opt-out people aren't, and I was like, but don't you think that the Russell School Committee's work is important?
Yeah.
To be put in there, um, and so I asked that we could be invited to participate next year, uh, so Amy, if you keep that on your. Radar for, um, including us next year, that would be appreciated.
That's weird.
Okay. They didn't do the mosquito opt-out, that was one of the most lit town meetings I've been to.
It was the most lit.
Yeah, it was, uh, there were quite a few aggressive people on both sides of that one.
Yeah, I bet.
Well, what bothered me about that was that the Board of Health made a recommendation, the select board just. Blow them off.
So, same, same thing happened to us.
I didn't say that. Yeah, so. Okay.
Um, okay, so moving.
So, if you want help with that, you know, as you boil that stuff down, please reach out to us, cause I, you know.
Of course I will, of course I will, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, well, all your suggestions and send it.
I thank you for that, it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, but it also is illuminating, that's why I knew that Alan had volunteered to pay nine. And that we could have up to a thousand respondents. Well, like, all the things you included in the CPA application. When I read that, I was, I was blown away, that was a lot of work, lot of stuff that you put in there.
Yeah, Dan and I worked, uh, frequently around, um, helped with, uh, pieces of it as well.
Mm-hmm. Uh, like eight or nine things, and, so I wanted to include that, for example.
Yeah.
In the long report.
Um, so next on the agenda is Hadley Media, um, as I shared the email last week, uh, they won't be recording past August first for us. Um, but there are options for us to record on our own if we so choose, uh, so.
But doesn't your cell phone record?
So Hadley Media won't be doing the recording, but do we have access to the owl and stuff so that we can record the thing and?
I don't think so.
No, so we have to find a way to, to record the meeting or just do it on.
Recorded on Zoom.
Recorded on somebody's laptop.
Okay, I'm, I'm here, um, so the letter said that, um, you can, hello, so you can either, A, go on. You can, um, grab a Zoom link from Jennifer in the select board office, or we can, um, sign out. On owl to you to have the meetings recorded, um, and we are offering training.
Yes, I remember that, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
I don't understand what it's like. For the minutes, I need to.
So either we can do Zoom.
Zoom, which.
Like usual.
Right, it's an option to record, and we just use someone's laptop.
Yeah, and so that would just be my face, cause I would be putting on my laptop.
Yeah.
Um, or we can rent out the owl. From Hadley Media, this thing.
Oh, that's an owl.
Um, and.
What do you mean, we rented, any cost?
I don't think so.
Oh, no, no cost.
No cost, but we will, there, there is a, a quick training on how to set it up and.
Uh-huh, and then we borrow it for the meeting and return it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen.
Alex.
Alex.
Um, so do we wanna do that, do the owl thing? I think it doesn't matter.
Um. It's, it's certainly more, um.
More efficient.
Um, inclusive, when you get to see more people's faces.
Sure, yeah.
I would advocate for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're not as pretty as, or anything.
Well, yeah.
What can we say?
You gotta take the bad with the good, right? Um, I would, I would be in favor of, of recording as much as possible, so either way, or, you know, so, I, I would imagine that the owl's not gonna be. Or equipment from Hadley Media is not gonna be available each time, so, um, we could, I, you know, advocate to get it as much as possible.
Yeah, okay.
We can always, um. Uh, suggest to select board to increase the amount of, uh. Budget, add the idiot needs, get more of that, back to work with.
Yeah.
I think they probably don't have a lot of people doing it. And that could be part of.
Yeah.
You know, you know, it seems to be getting busy and. I do appreciate all of your work, Alex.
Yes, thank you.
And, um. You know, the, things have definitely been getting better and, and, uh. If we can keep that going, and anything we can do to, to, to help. Let us know.
Okay, um, so posting minutes, um, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that Jennifer was working on getting minutes up. For, for all committees and boards. Um, last I spoke with her was about two weeks ago, she said she was working with a website company to help create pages for the community. For the committees without pages like us. Um, I haven't heard back from her yet, so I'll check back with her in a couple of weeks, just to give her a little more time, uh, to see the statuses on that, um.
Well, we've got a large number of minutes, I mean, we met every other week, or?
Yeah, she ha- she has them all.
But she hasn't posted any of them.
No, I haven't posted yet, so I'm gonna give her a couple more weeks, um. But something that I've said, I've, I've asked many times was to be added to the, uh, the board list. Um, on the website, um, just so people know that we're.
Yeah, that we're many.
And that's information, and we still haven't been added to that, so I don't know if Amy, you have any suggestions on how we can get our name on there? Um, because I've asked Carolina, Jennifer and Jane.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely do that, and I think tomorrow we're going over, um, different liaisons. Um, different committees for people to be liaisons for, um, so that's another thing that I can make a note and bring up. Um, for her, just to make sure that those are all posted. Um. I'm gonna make a note of that right now.
So Amy, would you continue to be the liaison now that you're chair?
Do you guys hate me?
Well, no.
We love you, we want you to stay, we want you to come to the meeting.
I'm just wondering.
It's so nice having you here, cause we have so many questions that you can answer for us.
The big chair is a big deal.
And even if you can't answer the questions, at least you can ask them.
Yeah.
Um, so here's the. Um. I, so I've already talked to the, the heavy-hitting ones. Um, and I've kind of asked, you know, like, the, um. Oh, I don't know, this is being recorded.
Yeah, it is.
So I won't be, I won't be taking on any, um, large committees. I think they have all, we've all kind of decided. Um, on who will be taking the really big ones, like DPW, um, fire and police, so, um. That won't be me. Uh, so I will have the opportunity for you guys, um. If you will still have me.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And it's good, and it's good to have a liaison that is, um. Really passionate, I think, about what you're doing. Um, and that's kind of where I, I mean, I I will never hide it, but I. My main goal is like, I I hope that this is what happens, but like. I hope it gets restored, I hope it gets used for town use. And is available to the public like that, from, that's my personal thing, obviously, I can't be like out there. Trying to like shove it down anyone's throat, but that that's for me personally, like I really believe in what you guys are doing, and I really believe. That restoring, not just stabilizing, but like restoring the building. And having it available for the, for public use is the best option for the town as a whole. Um, but that, that's just me.
Yeah, and then, you know, that um, you know, that attitude really works, I mean. Uh, Joyce has always been a first responder backer. Uh, safety first backer, and it's bring, it's it's brought this town to a different level. Um, she's, you know, she's been here for many, many years, and she's very, very consistent on that. And where she doesn't like the Russell School too much, you know, so, you know, maybe she's had an effect on that too. But the things that she's passionate about have gone quite a ways, and you know, I remember the days when the, you know. Police and Fire Station was over on West Street in that tiny little building. And they did an awful lot of work out of that tiny little shack. And now um we have a lot of equipment, and we have a lot of. Uh, you know, we have ambulance service going, we got a lot of stuff going on, and a lot of that's thanks to Joyce. And how she promotes that and is, has, you know, she's in a position. To uh bring that to the forefront at a lot of meetings, so, you know, that. You know, if you're passionate about something, you're on the board, it's gonna work, so I would encourage you to not give up that particular fight. And we definitely, uh, you know, the people who voted, you know, and filled out the survey in favor of saving that building, do appreciate it. That's the majority.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you.
Well, we'll be behind you.
Um, so new business, um, I just passed off this form.
Yeah.
Uh, for folks to fill out, um, to uh decide if you would like to be reappointed. Um, it's due on June fourteenth, um, so if you wanna take it home for any reason, feel free. Uh, otherwise, please fill it out at the end of the meeting and get it back to me. Um, I've reached out to Alan, I have not heard back about his uh interest in uh being reappointed, so.
Question for Amy, can this form be used for more than one committee?
Yeah.
Cause I put Russell School and Municipal Building Committee, I hope that works.
I think so, it says boards slash committees.
Okay.
So, yeah, I. I don't see why not. I mean, if you can be one thing, be efficient. Yeah, I think you're fine.
Well, it says singular board or committee for which your appointments are single.
Do you have to fill out more?
But on the top, it says boards slash committees, so I don't know.
That's not helpful.
Um, any other new business?
No, when you said about listed on the website, um. Emma. Us, and you, did you say Alan or not?
Well, I, in terms of being listed on the website, I just wanna make sure that the Russell School Committee. It's listed as a committee, and to have our Gmail account on there, so people. Not, not the names of the committee members.
Or not the names, really?
I mean, once we have our own page, we'll have the committee members on there, but the board list only has the names.
The names of the committees, not the members.
Yeah.
Okey dokey.
Thanks, anything else before we clear out the next meeting's gonna be?
I didn't take very good notes.
Record it. For that.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, I would only um circle back a little bit to the um, the bullet points and the scope of work.
Yeah.
And point out that um, you know, there's more options here and um. You know, if, that's, that's what I would imagine that the firm is gonna present to town. And when it comes down to uh public-private partnership. Or private project. That. Can be um very complicated. And there's a so- a a cost associated with that type of thing, and it's mostly uh costing time. So if. If in fact. The town were to opt for. Partnership of some sort. Or a private uh sale, I would, you know, try to have that. You know, have a lot of work with this whatever firm, and you know, get our committee involved with that firm. To make sure that um. You know, whatever type of um option is is sought after or looked at. You know, we get a more than robust. Cooperation and communication with town members who may be interested in that type of partnership or private endeavor. Um, again, that can be pretty complicated, especially a partnership.
Yeah.
Um, insurance-wise, um, how the building is put together. You know, who operates, who, you know, who's paying for what operating costs. Um, who's paying for what part of the, you know, the renovations? All that stuff can take a lot of time to figure out and actually get a game plan together. So that type of cost really has to be looked at closely, and you know, without that firm. Working closely with us, and we have, you know, we have a lot of names, we have a lot of, you know, responses from that survey. We could reach out to a lot of these people and get their ideas as as well as, you know, their feelings, how much they would like to become involved, I mean. I'd love to be a partner, you know, in some type of thing like that, but. Who are, who are the other partners gonna be? Is there gonna be some kind of, is there gonna be a nonprofit board? Is there gonna be? Uh, a nonprofit like, uh, Hadley Historic Society that would like to become involved and be a partner? Um, there's lots of different things and have a big effect on. Um, those other costs that are other than money. So.
I guess I'm not, I'm confused about this. Are you saying that the feasibility study might? They will talk about the pu- public-private partnerships, they might recommend it?
They might, you know, they, well, the thing is, they're supposed to advocate for all four of these in earnest.
Or there are five, which five?
Well, there's, there's four, the the last one, which is also looking at other studies, is just gonna be included in their scope of work.
Oh.
So um, you know, they're supposed to, you know, uh, recommend each one of these things with with dollar. Values assigned. Um, but not necessarily timeframes assigned, so. You know, even the first one, if it's a private or a public project, there's no timetable associated with that. And you know, the the way our committee originally wanted to do this is just stabilize the building and worry about use later. And that's a particular cost. And the cost for bringing it farther toward usability is a different cost and is on a different timetable. And will be in a different point in time, so if these things aren't taken. Into perspective and taking out of, taken way out of perspective.
Well, why isn't just the stabilization included here?
You know, you would have to ask the select board that question.
Yeah. I'll ask, because I have to ask about Jake's participation as well. Yeah, I'll ask about that.
Well, this is number two above. The scope of the work, the feasibility study, that's number two up above, includes the stability thing.
Sure.
Well, a feasibility study will identify funding sources.
Well, I, you know, I. You know, I hate to say it, but it seems like the scope of work and these bullet points are um, you know, divisive. And trying to um drive up the costs, stretch out the timetable. And make the whole project go toward.
I mean, that's much more complicated, you know.
It just seems like, and and a lot of this, you know, with with the uh. Pre-development stabilization, construction, operating estimates, that's, is that a sentence? Is that a statement? Is that a request? What is that?
I mean, that's. Each one of those things is going to have a budget estimate. Um, but free development, what does that mean?
It's, it seems to be a lot of political speak, just to sound like you know what you're talking about type of stuff, and it really doesn't say anything.
Free development?
I also don't love, under the private project, it says sale or long-term lease, I don't think both of those should be put together. Because some people are finding that owning the property, continuing to own the property, and leasing it out. But others, a- a- and those people are also uh opposed to the sale.
Yeah.
Which is why we separated them out, you know, and started.
Well, that's a big oar there.
Yeah, so I mean, that's why, that's why I say that, you know, like, I don't, I hate to say this, but it sounds, the whole thing sounds divisive. And and um, you know, I, you know, we didn't recommend any of this stuff.
No, I, that's the thing.
And it's not, it's not our building, it's the whole town's building, and we were, I think we were very cautious. Is to make the options that we put out on the survey um to the point and concise and complete. So that the town had obvious and clear choices to how they would proceed if it were theirs, blah, blah, blah. So, I mean, jumbling everything up, mixing up everything like that, it just makes it more confusing and.
Well, like number one, coordination with town administration, the select board community, ensure robust public engagement. Uh, didn't we do that in this committee?
Yes. I mean, if that's what the firm wants to do, come straight to us, because we've done that.
We already did that, that's why I was thinking of doing a. This um. You know, re- recap of what we've done over here.
I'm just, I'm just afraid that the, the couple of us, it seems like they don't want us involved at all, so.
I'm sorry.
I just feel like they don't want us involved at all, so I don't know if they will contact us.
I think so. She and I are dog partners. That's how I met her.
Anyway, I just wanted to point those things out before we close the.
Yeah, no, that.
Thank you for that.
I don't, who, who wrote this, you know?
I really don't, and I, you know. I don't have a clue, I mean, especially after, after looking at all our survey stuff, who wrote this? I don't know.
Well, the scope of work, I, you know what, I think this was done by Architectural Underage Foundation.
Oh, really? A lot of gobbledygook, pardon my French.
Um, I can uh let you know about that.
Yes, please.
All right, um, so next meeting, um, when do we think makes sense to meet next? Do you wanna do another month?
Yeah, I guess.
So a month out, uh.
Fourth of July.
July, so.
Oh, yes.
The following week, the eleventh, twelfth or thirteenth, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday?
The eleventh, I will have a meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and not be available for this one. But the twelfth or thirteenth is open.
Okay. Carolyn.
First Wednesday is usually select for, second Wednesday of the month is usually select for.
Okay.
And is that the twelve?
So maybe the thirteenth. Amy, does the thirteenth for you, July thirteenth for the next meeting?
Think maybe she left.
That should be fine. Yeah. I don't see a reason why not, I don't take holidays or vacations, so I'm always here.
Is Select Board gonna meet every other week all summer long?
As far as I know, unless there needs to be like an emergency meeting for whether Executive Board or something else.
So you're not taking any time off?
I don't think so, not that I'm aware of, we have a lot going on at the moment.
Yeah, I know, summer is often a busy time.
Okay, so the thirteenth it is?
Yeah.
Yep, the thirteenth it is.
I was thinking maybe we should meet before, but I guess.
Well, we can consider that as the meeting before, whatever their next meeting will be, on the nineteenth or twenty-sixth.
Okay. So you think that the. And Amy didn't write this. The reuse feasibility study.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Bye.
Bye bye. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.